Today is January 5th, 2022. Happy New Year. Anchorage Plating Board is now in session. May we have a roll call?
Don Porter.
Present.
Kevin Cross.
Present.
Valerie Ritz.
Present.
Karen McGilbreay.
Present.
Ryan Mormon.
Present.
Zach Young.
Present.
Jenna Welteenset, excuse me, to have a quorum. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we get started, would everybody stand? Zach, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Thank you, Zach. All right, moving on to approvals. We have a motion to approve the action summaries. We have an action summary dated Wednesday, December 1st, 2021. We have a motion to accept by Valerie Ritz, second by Zach Young. Any nays? Hearing none, motion passes. Second, move to approve, looking for a motion to approve the minutes for Wednesday, December 1st, 2021. We have a motion to approve by Zach Young, seconded by Valerie Ritz. Any nays? Hearing none, minutes are approved. Moving on to special orders of business. Before we get started, do we have any disclosures regarding tonight's cases before us? None noted. Please pay attention in your packets. Please note informational items, abbreviated plat action summaries for 11/29, 12/6, 12/13, and 12/20. And we have an additional special order of business. We find ourselves in need of a vice chair. So we will need to vote on a vice chair. You can motion for yourself. You can vote for yourself. May I have a motion for a vice chair? Don't everybody scurry at once to volunteer to be vice chair. You know, we could just pick Jenna. She's not here. She's on. We just pick the person who's not here, and then she'd find out they're vice chair. Is that how that works? Guess we'll hold this till the next meeting? Or does this have to be done at this meeting? Okay, well, I'll let you guys consider this. We'll readdress this after our public testimony and our cases, but we should probably... As serving as vice chair, I'm here. Don't be scared, okay? It's not as intimidating as it sounds. So, excellent. We will... I can't have a... Do I need a motion to move this to the end? May I have a motion to move the election of an officer to the end of today's meeting, move it to the last agenda item? Ryan, would you care to speak to your motion?
I'll speak to my motion to move the change of electing an officer to the end of the meeting tonight.
Thank you. We have a second by Karen McGilbreay. Do I see any nays? Seeing none, so moved. You were not out of the woods yet. Moving on, we have consent agenda. Time extensions. Let's see what we've got here. Consent agenda covering our time extensions and findings of fact. The resolutions. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? We have a motion by Don Porter, second by Zach Young. Do I hear any nays regarding approval of the consent agenda? Seeing none, consent agenda is approved. Do we have any old business? Didn't see any in my package. So we'll move on to new business. My apologies. The plating board meets each month on the first and third Wednesday, except holidays, as regular meetings. If the plating board fails to complete its agenda for its regular meetings, the board carries over the remainder of the agenda to the following meeting. The procedure by which the public may speak to the plating board at its meetings is as follows. One, after the staff presentation is completed on public hearing items, staff's over here, the chair will ask for public testimony on the issue. Persons who wish to testify will follow the time limits established in the Commission Rules of Procedures. Those are petitioners. These are individuals and/or representatives, the petitioners, including his or her representatives, 10 minutes. Now, part of this time will be reserved for rebuttal. Two, representatives of groups such as community council, PTAs, et cetera, they have five minutes. And finally, private individuals have three minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the board. You may only testify once on any given issue unless questioned by the board. Any individual may appeal the rights pertaining to the action that the plating board takes. Appeal of this decision or any of the conditions is governed under AFC 2111304. The discussion of the board at the scheduled public hearing shall become final seven calendar days after the date of the decision is made on the record, unless a written request for, excuse me, a written request is submitted to the plating division prior to the expiration of the seventh day to prepare a written decision based upon the record made at the hearing, and the request is accompanied in writing notice of intent appeal. So again, you have seven days. Adoption of the written decision by the plating board becomes the final appealable decision. Within 20 days of the final appealable decision, an interested party may file with the municipal clerk either, A, a written motion alleging new evidence or change in circumstances per AMC 2111503, or B, an appeal of the board's final appealable decision per AMC 2130. Excellent. All right, we now move to new business. What have we got? Redisc... Okay. New business. Case is now open. Case number S 12645 is now open. May we have staff's presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a request for a subdivision to revert 18 lots into one lot and to vacate a 50-foot right-of-way known as Vander Court that was originally dedicated per plat 70-374. So the subdivision plat to one parcel of land is the first step in allowing a conservation easement to be placed on the vacated Vander Court and remaining property. This will allow conservation of all the wetlands within the entire subdivision. Solid Waste Services is constructing a new central transfer station. As part of that development, a wetland permit from the Army Corps of Engineers allowed for fill to be placed on the site in exchange for the worst subdivision, including that portion of Vander Court, to be placed in a conservation easement for the existing wetlands on the site. So this is the new Solid Waste Services way over there on Dowling that you can see from the Stewart Highway. They're filling in some there, so they're basically doing exchange over here with this subdivision. And this is preparing it by basically bringing it back to just one complete lot. So no municipal agencies have objections to the proposed vocation or preliminary plat. One comment in opposition was received from the public. However, if we take a look at that comment, let me briefly, I just had it, page of your staff packet, page 71. It is in opposition, however, I think there might have been a little confusion. This is, you know, it's reverting it back to acreage of just one land, so... And the creek will be, you know, it'll all be in a conservation easement. So with that, the traffic engineering department had no objections to vacation of the Vander Court right-of-way. And we can move on to the staff analysis of the criteria in vacating public rights of way. So staff finds criteria one has been met. They have no, the traffic department has no objections to the vacation, the right-of-way was never developed, and the parcel is used for wetlands mitigation. It's demonstrated that Vander Court is in excess of municipal need. Staff finds condition two has been met. The portion of Vander Court is not part of the official streets and highways plan. Staff finds conditions three is met. As demonstrated by the applicant and agency review confirmed it. The subject right-of-way is not located on the half-mile grid. Same with condition number four, it's been met. It is not located on the quarter-mile grid. Staff finds condition five has been met. The vacation will not have any impact on traffic circulation and is not part of the official streets and highways plan. The right-of-way is in excess of municipal need because it is surrounded by property that is accessed from other dedicated rights-of-way, and the parcel land will be encumbered by a conservation easement once the parcel is reverted back to a single parcel of land. Staff finds conditions six have been met. The vacation will not result in realignment of any existing right-of-way and does not impact existing traffic circulation. Vander Court was never constructed. The utility companies will have the opportunity to review the proposed plat and request easements as necessary, including AWU. Therefore, staff believes that the right-of-way is in excess of municipal need and recommends approval of this vacation and plat subject to the conditions found on pages seven and eight of your staff packet. So that's A1 for the vacation, and then B1 through four for the approval of the plat to revert it back to one lot. I can answer any questions you have, and the petitioner's representative is here as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for the staff? Seeing none, may we hear from the petitioner?
Good evening. My name is Laquita Chmalowski. I'm the Land Use Planning Manager at Dowell, and I'm here tonight representing the Heritage Land Bank and Solid Waste Services. And I would like to request to retain any of my remaining time for rebuttal. So as staff mentioned, this project's related to the new central transfer station for Solid Waste Services over on 56th. So the worst subdivisions located on the north side of the undeveloped portion of Lower Right-of-Way, as they mentioned, lots 1 through 18 are already encumbered by a conservation easement. And the purpose of this plat is to create a single tract so that the right-of-way can also be included in that conservation easement. As you can see, the green shaded area across the property are type A wetlands, which are preservation. And so this is another reason that the Corps wanted to further preserve this area. And then you can also see that the creek runs through a portion of the properties and through the right-of-way. So as we mentioned, this is really related to the wetlands mitigation for Solid Waste Services' new central transfer station. That property was previously owned by Walmart, and they went to, they went and got a Corps permit to place fill, and that's what created the conservation easement on lots 1 through 18 of the worst subdivision. And then, we, with our project, we needed to get additional mitigation, and that's when the Corps requested that the Vander Court right-of-way also be included in that conservation easement. So this plat's that first step to allow us to extend that conservation easement over the entire property. And then this is just a copy of the preliminary plat that you have in your packet showing that it would be reverted back to a single tract. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Thank you. Do you have any questions for the petitioner? None, and we've noted that you're reserving the rest of your time for your rebuttal. Thank you very much. At this time, I would like to open the case up to public testimony. So anybody that would like to speak regarding case number S 12645? Thank you. Hit the little, there's a little, on your microphone, there's a little head that's got some, indicates your mic's on. Red light will come on when it's on. Nope. On your, on your mic, hit the little button. It looks like a face with sound waves coming out. There you go.
Sorry.
Yeah, if you would completely, if you could speak your name clearly, help us spell your last name, and then who you represent, if you're an individual or if you represent an organization.
No problem. My name is Bronson Frye, F-R-Y-E. I'm representing just myself. My wife and I bought our first home together on Gray Wolf Circle, got the notice. So just wanted to check in. Some of our neighbors are here as well, so we were just kind of curious if this land was going to be combined into one lot so that it is protected from future development? Or is there a chance in the future that this land will be developed? Or what exactly does this mean for the long-term future of that piece of land right there? Basically, my backyard.
Excellent.
Okay, thank you. Our backyard.
Thank you, Bronson.
I'll stay, I guess. Go ahead.
Yeah, does anybody have a question for Bronson Frye?
Okay.
Seeing none, thank you, Bronson.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you all.
Is there any other public that wishes to speak regarding case S 12645? Hearing none, the petitioner, mind coming up and addressing Mr. Bronson's concerns?
Sure. So the plat would allow the conservation easement to be placed on the entire property, which would protect it from development from now into the future? That's all I have.
So just for clarification, conservation easement, this will basically resort into public lands, much like a park, just a green space?
Correct.
No private development?
That is correct.
Excellent. Magnificent. Any other questions for the petitioner? Thank you. Testimony is now closed. The matter now rests with the board?
Mr. Chair, staff had just a quick comment to make to the citizens. This plat is currently, as you had seen, there was 18 lots originally. All those 18 lots are going away. The right-of-way, that street that's on there that you can see with the cul-de-sac, that's all going away, and it's just going to be one big parcel of land. So there will be no more lots anymore. There'll be no more street there anymore underlying on paper, and it'll just be one lot. And as Laquita mentioned, that's going to be held in conservation easement.
Fantastic. Thank you.
And can I, I have a question. This is Karen McGilbreay, and this was requested by UCASE during the permitting for Solid Waste Services project.
Through the chair, Ms. McGilbreay, yeah, Laquita, I think, might be able to answer this. Yes, I believe it was, I believe that the lots configuration was originally with Walmart, and then with the Solid Waste Services, they said, well, we want the extra square footage that the right-of-way will encumber, so get rid of it all. Is that correct, Laquita?
Yeah, the Corps requested that the conservation easement be extended to include Vander Court right-of-way, and the only way to do that is to go through this plating process. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Excellent. See no other questions? Testimony is now closed. The matter now rests with the board. May I have a motion to approve the request of the 50-foot right-of-way? We have a motion by Don Porter, second by Valerie Ritz. Don, care to speak to your request, your motion, excuse me?
Yes, I move that we approve the vacation of 50 feet in case number S 12645, dedicated per the plat 7374, subject to the following condition, that it be recorded within 24 months.
Thank you. Valerie is second. And Mr. Porter, would you care to speak to your motion?
Yes. Staff packet and the petitioner, excuse me, have clearly demonstrated that the 50-foot right-of-way is in excess of municipal need for the purpose of creating the entire lot, and I intend to support this motion.
Thank you. Is there any other individuals wishing to speak to this motion? Okay. I also intend to approve the request for the vacation of 50-foot right-of-way of Vander Court. Again, this is critical in order to convert the section to one lot and create a nice green space. I think it'll be a really nice development in there. I know that in the last three years, we've actually seen quite a bit of replating and subdivisions in the area, so it'll be nice to create a nice little green space in there, particularly in light that it surrounds a stream and a waterway, and I think that would be a critical attribute to protect. So I'll be moving to approve that. May we have a vote? And the yeses have it. Seven yes, zero no. Next, may I have a motion to approve the plat for 24 months, subject to the conditions noted on pages seven and eight? We have a move by Don Porter, seconded by Valerie Ritz. Don, would you care to speak to your motion?
Yes, in the case of S 12645, I am moved to approve the plat for 24 months, subject to the conditions 1, 2A, 2B, 2C, 3, 4, 4A, I, and B. I intend to support this motion.
Thank you. Don, would you care to speak to your motion?
I, again, as clearly demonstrated, for the purpose of developing a conservation easement, the need to develop this back to one lot rather than the 18 individual lots has been clearly demonstrated. And so I intend to support this motion.
Thank you. Is there anybody else at which to speak to this motion? Well, I think it's pretty clear. I also intend to support this motion, so hearing no objections, may we have a vote? Excellent. We have six yeses, zero nos. Motion passes. Congratulations, Mr. Frye, and you and your neighbor's property values have just gone up. You bet. Have a great day. Moving on. All right, case S 12649 is now open. May we have staff's presentation, please?
Thank you. This is a request to subdivide 15 lots into one tract and vacate portions of Taylor Street, Mumford Street, Price, McPhee Avenue, originally dated, dedicated per plat P 5A. This request is being made to combine the lots into a single tract of land for future development. No municipal agencies have objected to the proposed vacation of this or preliminary plat. 163 public notices were mailed on December 13th, 2021. The Mountain View Community Council did not provide comment. There's been one late comment received in your packet. Agency comments are detailed on page two through four of the staff report. The following criteria must be considered in any vacation of public rights-of-way. Standard one, the applicant states that the rights-of-way are surplus to current and future public needs. The proposed Hidden Valley Acres tract will remain, retain access to Mumford Street, Taylor Street, and Price Street to the south and McPhee Avenue to the east. There's a significant topographical challenge present making the development of the existing rights-of-way unlikely. Just north of where the existing rights-of-way are constructed is an approximately 40-foot elevation drop with an approximate 40% slope, exceeding that allowable, the allowable slope of 10% for a constructed road. The Traffic Engineering Department states in their comments that they have no objection to the vacation, and it's clearly demonstrated that these portions of Mumford Street, Taylor Street, Price Street, and McPhee Avenue are in excess of municipal need. Standard two, these streets are not classified by the official streets and highway plan. Standard three, as demonstrated by the applicant and confirmed by the reviewing agencies, the subject rights-of-way are not located on the half-mile grid. Standard four, Mumford, Taylor, and Price Street are not located on the quarter-mile grid. McPhee Avenue is located on the quarter-mile grid, however, the right-of-way is in excess of future needs as Jay Bear extends the northern and western property boundary prohibiting any further extension. The topography present on the site is unlikely to allow any development of the rights-of-way. Standard five, the vacation will not have any impact on traffic circulation, and the roads are not part of the official streets and highway plan. Standard six, this vacation will not result in realignment of any existing rights-of-way and does not impact existing traffic circulation. The proposed tract has legal and physical access to Mumford, Taylor, and Price Street to the south and McPhee Street to the east. Reviewing agencies have expressed no objection to the request to vacate the rights-of-ways. Utility companies will have the opportunity to review the proposed plat and request easements as necessary. Therefore, the staff believes the right-of-way is in excess of municipal need and recommends approval of this vacation subject to the conditions on page six of the report. The applicant is available, and the representative is available virtually if needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for staff? Hearing none, may we hear from the petitioner?
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you slightly. Could you please speak your name?
Yes, my name is Tony Hoffman. I'm with the Bootake Company, and I am the petitioner's representative tonight. I'm with, I believe in attendance tonight is the owner of the property, Mr. Ned Hahn. And I'd like to make my presentation and leave a few minutes for Mr. Hahn, and then we will retain the rest of our time for any rebuttal or questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Could we work on his audio a little bit? Is it just me? Is he sounding a little muffled? You're a little muffled, Tony. We're going to have to work on your audio here just a little bit. I want to make sure I can hear you clearly. Why don't you go ahead and begin, and if we have any questions, we may need you to speak slowly and clearly. Appreciate you.
Okay, I'll try, I'll try, I'll talk a little closer here. So as Steph has mentioned, the property is in the northwest corner of Mountain View. It is, it has sat there for many, many years, undeveloped. As we all know, Anchorage land is, is, developable land is pretty much all gone. This piece of land hasn't been developed for the reason that Carly spoke to, that it is basically inaccessible due to the grades at the end of the rights-of-way that, on Price Street, McPhee, Mumford, and Taylor. It's a piece of land that has just sat there for many, many years. The owner has bought it, and just, at this time, there's no development plan for it. We just want to clean the property in the sense that we want to eliminate all the property lines that vacate the rights-of-way that are in excess of municipal needs, and just create one tract of land. Then, after we have gained that entitlement, we will look at development options. If you look at the staff package and some of the information we put together, it's almost impossible to physically access down into the property, the majority of the property, because of the grades. It'll create, it'll necessitate some very ingenious engineering to get down into it and create any sort of a building site. So we're not at that stage yet. We don't know what sort of development plans could be developed in the future. We're not at that stage. We just want to create one tract of land tonight. And Steph has said, we've looked at the long-range transportation plans and all the applicable Mountain View plans, and, and I did reach out to Jay Bear Planning and tried to get some input from them, and it was not forthcoming. With that information and with all the information that's been provided to you in the staff's package, I think I'm going to let Mr. Ned Hahn come up and speak his piece. He is excited to be there tonight, I think.
All right, thank you. Is that the end of the presentation?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yes, that's the end of my presentation, and after Mr. Hahn is done, we'll retain our time for any rebuttal.
So that's the conclusion, and it was, it's my... So that's the conclusion, and it was, it's my understanding, there's nobody else. Okay. Thank you. Do we have any questions for the petitioner? Seeing none, I, I have a question. I'm noting, and I'm seeing on your plat here, that you've eliminated the access, that the original plat showed access off the end of Mumford and Price. That it looks like there was an intention for those to continue through on the other side. It looks like Price has a 60-foot turnaround, but Mumford, and forgive me, I'll bring this up real quick. Yeah, Mumford does not have any kind of turnaround. Was there any kind of conversations that you had with fire safety regarding making sure there's adequate articulation for a fire truck to circle on those roads? It seems to me...
I, I actually think that was addressed, through the chair, I think that was addressed with the staff comment in the request for a temporary turnaround to be placed on the plat. There, at this, you know, what you're seeing on Price and on Mumford are the physical street, you know, construction, you can see the edge of pavement and the curb lines and such. So, when the plat, as we, as we move through the plat process and get to the final plat, we will be providing a full turnaround for, for, that's adequate for a fire and safety turnaround. So, that will be provided.
All right. Excellent. Thank you very much. Any other questions for the petitioner? I think he hung up. All right. All right. Hearing none, we now open case S-12649, open for public testimony. If anybody in the public who'd wish to speak to this case? Seeing none? Testimony is, oh, Mr. Hoffman, would you like to use any of your rebuttal time?
Through the staff, I would like to address this view, there was one public comment that came in, and I, I just think it's a kind of a confusion about what, what the plat is trying to accomplish. The points of access, you know, through the four streets, Taylor and McPhee, Price and Mumford, is not changing. You know, we're, we're not changing points of access into the property. Those can't change. The, you know, where we're ending, where the property ends, at, at the vacation, you know, where we're starting the vacation, that, that's going to stay. I mean, but we don't know where the physical access is going to be built into the property, if and when it's ever developed. I just, I think it's, this, this comment is a little, it's just, it's, it's kind of a confusion, I think, on the, on the person that wrote the comment about what our points of access are. They're not changing, so.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. We have somebody in the queue, Carley Gendig? Did I pronounce your last name right?
Gettig, that's correct.
Gettig, thank you. Carley?
Thank you, through the chair. I just wanted to reiterate and kind of further answer your question regarding potential turnarounds for emergency vehicles. Condition of approval for the plat B-3A requires an easement at the terminus of Mumford, Price, and Taylor Street to be dedicated prior to final plat approval for both emergency vehicles and street maintenance operations. So there will be required to be three turnarounds dedicated, or easements on the plat to ensure that there's going to be enough space for maneuvering.
Excellent. I appreciate that. Any other questions for staff? Hearing none. This matter is now closed, and testimony is now closed. May I now have a motion to approve? We have a motion by Zach Young, seconded by Dan Porter. Zach, would you care to, would you please speak your motion?
Due to the grade of the property in question, I think it is impossible to build on the lots.
Hey, Zach? So, I appreciate your, your vigorousness. The department recommendation, we're looking for approval on page six. The department recommendation, approval A is before us. So we're looking to, for an approval of the request to vacate the right-of-ways within the subject parcel portions of Mumford Street, Taylor Street, Price Street.
Due to the grade of the right-of-ways in question, I find it will likely be impossible to
Okay.
use the right-of-ways as was originally intended due to the plating, and therefore I move to have them vacated.
Okay. So, thank you, Zach. I'm looking for a motion to approve the request to vacate the right-of-ways within the subject parcel portions of Mumford Street, Taylor Street, Price Street, and McPhee Avenue per plat P-5, subject to the following conditions. One, record a suitable plat 24 months of its approval. We need to first have the motion on the floor, so then we can speak to it, so...
Motion for the approval of the request to vacate the rights-of-way within the subject partial portions of Mumford Street, Taylor Street, Price Street, and McPhee Avenue per plat P-5A are subject to the following conditions. Record a suitable plat within 24 months of its approval.
Excellent. Thank you. We have a motion by Zach Young, seconded by Don, Don Porter. Zach, now would you care to speak to your motion?
As previously stated, I motion to vacate the rights-of-way due to the extreme grade of the parcel in question and the inability to use rights-of-way as originally intended during plating.
Excellent. Anybody else care to speak to the motion? Mr. Porter?
Yes, I also intend to support this motion. Based on the items demonstrated in the staff analysis, that the right-of-ways are excess of municipal need, and we've also heard from the petitioner that as, as the lots are configured now, they're undevelopable, and they wish to revise it into a single developable situation to consider their options. And so, with that, I intend to support this motion.
Thank you. Anybody else care to speak to the motion? I also intend to speak to this motion. Again, I think it's also important to note that there are six items that are required. Following the criteria must be considered for a vacation of public right-of-way, and noting on number four, that McPhee Avenue is located on the quarter-mile grid in excess of all future needs, as Jay Bear extends along the northern and western property boundary, prohibiting any further extension. And again, to my concerns about vehicle turnaround for fire and safety, that will be resolved. So I will also be voting for this. So, may we have a vote? Six yeses, zero nos. Motion passes. May I have a motion to approve the plat for 24 months, subject to the conditions noted? We have a motion by Don Porter, seconded by Zach Young. Don, care to speak to your motion? Or state your motion, please?
Yes, I move to approve the plat for 24 months, subject to conditions 1, 2, 3A, 3B, 4A, 4B, and 5A, 5B.
Excellent. Do you care to speak to your motion?
Yes, I, yes, I intend to support this motion. We've heard discussion about the difficulty of development on the lot and the need to vacate the right-of-way, so I intend to support the motion because the, the owner, while it looks difficult to develop, needs the freedom to maybe configure something differently or, or do something that would, that would allow it to be developed in the future.
Excellent. Thank you. Anybody else care to speak to the motion? Excellent. I also intend to support this, as noted. Again, those items on pages four, five, and the top of page six. Hearing no other and seeing no other else wanting to speak, may we have a vote, please? Six yeses, zero no, motion passes. Excellent. Case is closed. All right. Well, as we wrap up here, it has reared its head. We still need a vice chair before we excused. You've had an opportunity now for the last, I don't know, 37 minutes or however long it's taken us to consider who that's going to be, the lucky individual. The vice-chair mini-me, as we would so call it. Would you, do we have any nominations?
Through the chair, I'd like to nominate Don Porter.
I love that.
Who was that?
You better second it. You better second it, Val. All right. So, Kelly McGilvery has dominated Don Porter. Do we have a second? Oh, Zach Young is seconded. Karen, would you care to speak to your motion?
Through the chair, it's Karen McGilvery.
Karen, I just, you know, I just finished my...
Janice's not here, so I gotta keep it sharp. No, I've been, during my time here, appreciated Don Porter's level-headedness, ability to see big picture, and I think he'll do very fine at the job.
Thank you.
Excellent. Anybody else wish to speak as to Don Porter's qualifications to be vice-chair? I'm, I would support that, and I think you do a magnificent job. You have profound wisdom and knowledge on things that I am rather impressed with, and a wonderful insight into things I've otherwise would not have considered.
Agreed.
I certainly appreciate, and reluctantly accept your comments, and, you know, he'll, he'll still call me Dan from time to time, if that's okay.
We will, we will, we will, we will leave here and go get matching unitards.
No, I, I do reluctantly, I, I get tongue-tied from time to time, but fair enough.
Well, you would have ever have noticed. All right. Well then, congratulations. If there isn't any other items?
No.
Nope, no objections. Don it is. And unless there's no items, we stand adjourned.